All right, we've got six o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting up. Welcome to the North School Committee meeting for November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone here is also recording it, please let us know so we can enter that into the record. To get this to know. Okay, we're gonna start off with the pledge of allegiance flag from my left and right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First off, we have a vote to approve the minutes about October twenty-fifth and October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one holding meetings. Does everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yes.
Yes. Any corrections or objections?
No.
Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve both of those minutes. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? And Joe, we are still doing roll calls?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Stern?
Yes.
Mrs. Cohen?
Yes.
Mrs. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Sheed?
Yes.
Mr. Sebastian? Yes, yes. Uh, next up, we have the warrants.
I reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, four hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. School payroll warrants, November fourth, two thousand twenty-one, one million, thirty-nine thousand, twenty-seven dollars and six cents. I wish to enter them into public record.
Uh, next up, we have the student representative updates. We're gonna treat here, we've got them live and in person tonight. Come on up.
All right, hi.
You can take that.
It's weird being in person, but um, so I'm gonna start with the JCS and uh, Dr. Marcus said that they had all five hundred students together for the first time at the first annual Veterans Day flagpole ceremony outdoors at the school flagpole last week. And the day after that, they celebrated one of the school's core values with World Kindness Day. Students broke up into one of the five three K, the three houses and made kindness bookmarks for a buddy from different grade level in their house. The multi-grade houses are named after parts of the ocean like the JCS theme and are designed to connect students to strengthen the community. The big activity was put on hold due to weather, which is all, which is a giant school picture spelling out be kind from fifty feet out using a drone. And they said they're gonna get to that before Thanksgiving, so hopefully you get to see that too.
Um, so for the LG, they're very busy with a lot of Thanksgiving themed things. Um, they have large turkeys once per grade in the hallways and they each decorate the feather to go along with the book or a chapter in the book that they have read and then they bring the feather in and they add it on so that they can see all the books that they read. They are reading lists of grade level books together. Um, they all got some big books on their own. Um, the Scholastic Book Fair is happening this month. And she also, Ms. Luke also included pictures of the turkey, which is really cute, so I can forward you guys that. Um, but yeah, I'm gonna go straight into Yale. And um, he said, a couple of weeks ago, they had a very successful trunk or treat event, which was put on by the Yale PTO. And uh, tons of families came and enjoyed the night trunk treating together. Um, they also, uh, him and Dr. Marcus marched in the parade handing out candy. Uh, for Thanksgiving, they're going to have volleyball tournaments in PE classes with in-class battles for Thanksgiving week. Um, and they're going to do championship games with faculty and staff mixing in. Uh, they're also having Lancer Learning Time, uh, block has been very successful in supporting students and uh, everyone's really enjoying it. So they're all gearing up for Thanksgiving as well.
Um, so at the middle school, uh, tomorrow, they're actually gonna be wearing purple to raise awareness for epilepsy and show support for those facing the challenge. Um, on Monday, they're gonna bring back the annual Turkey Carnival. So NMS will be collecting canned goods along with the money raised at the Turkey Carnival to donate the cupboard, donate to the cupboard of kindness food pantry. And at the Turkey Carnival, they're going to have basketball foul shots, turkey bowling, plinko and a jukebox. And they're gonna have uh, Turkey Putt Putt, which is a new one for this year, so they're pretty excited for that. Um, also going to the high school, the sports teams have done really well, I'm sure you guys have seen that. And the cheerleaders are competing at the state championship on Sunday at Worcester State, so they're super excited getting ready for that. The football players are excited for the Thanksgiving football game. Looks like it's gonna be pretty cold though, so they gotta prepare for that. And we're super excited because we're planning the pep rally. Um, we're gonna have a really big pep rally this year. It's gonna be outside on the track. There's gonna be a Mario Kart relay where we have scooters and we're going around. Um, student versus teacher dodgeball, and some of the teachers are getting really excited yelling at these kids like, oh, you're going down.
Yeah, they're picking their targets right now.
Yeah, um, there's actually gonna be a DJ because one of the teachers, Mr. McDonough, is actually a DJ, so.
What day is that?
Um, it's on a half day on.
The Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yeah.
That's good, because then I don't have to worry about sick days on Thursday.
So that's gonna be from like ten to eleven, and we're gonna, we're super excited for it to do something big this year. And we also have Power Pop coming up Monday now. Um, super excited, I'm excited for that. And we also, just something, a little bit of an update is that midterms and finals discussions are happening in a lot of classes, so I'm sure we're gonna hear some of that. That's kind of it, I think, pretty much.
Great, thank you very much, guys. Anybody have any questions? Sounds like a fun week, yeah? Turkey bowling, what's that?
Turkey eating, maybe?
Yeah, true, that's true. Uh, student excellence awards is next up on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Madam Committee, the members of the committee and the public that's here tonight. Uh, there's probably no evening that's more fun for Joe Vieta than uh, this evening, right? It's an opportunity to celebrate students, um, an opportunity, especially as I've, um, said to, uh, last night at one of the virtual calls, coffee hours. You know, we're still in a pandemic, um, but we were at the height of a pandemic and here we are celebrating for young people for continuing to achieve at the highest end possible in so many different ways. Uh, so tonight, we recognize these four wonderful North High School students on the recommendation of, uh, the administration of North High School. Um, as I say every year when I'm here, I'm truly blessed to have the parents and family members involved with this. Um, it means a whole lot because I think it does take a community, um, to move students in the right direction. Thank you to our staff who support our students, but most importantly, thank you to the individual students that are here tonight for your work in, uh, in doing what you've been doing. Well, I'm gonna say four years, but more than likely for a long, longer than four years, uh, is a culminating night, um, of celebration for you folks and being recognized tonight of your education, um, in, uh, in Norton, no matter how many years, um, you've been with us. So this evening, I'd like to start with the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendent Certificate of Academic Excellence. This student stands out because of her incredible work ethic, kind nature and academic potential. She always puts forth incredible effort in her academic academics. It makes schoolwork a priority. This is demonstrated through her impressive GPA and current class ranking of number one in her graduating class. Abby Leo is a proud member of six academic honor societies where she holds many leadership titles, including president, treasurer and secretary. Abby has had more achievements, leadership titles and accolades than could possibly fit into one bio. Her initiatives and curiosity are apparent in many aspects of her life. She has toured local biopharmaceutical companies and has participated in meetings with mass representatives, Ed Markey and Joe Kimmy as part of a teen advocacy day benefiting the Sisters by Osis Foundation. Without a doubt, her poise, maturity and exquisite nature shine during these meetings. Within the Norton community, Abby is captain of the school's volleyball team, training supervisor at a part-time job, officer in the school's deck of clubs, student leader for a youth fellowship ministry and a valued member of the Global Citizens Club. What makes Abby shine is her ability to be involved in so many clubs and organizations while remaining actively engaged in her academic pursuits. In the future, Abby would like to explore a possible career in the field of molecular biology. I can barely say it, Abby. Along with the inspiration she gets from her family, Abby has always loved science and explains it as, quote, "When I learn about biology, specifically genetics and molecular studies, it feels as though puzzle pieces about the world are falling into place," end quote. The innovation and passion she exhibits makes me hopeful that Abby will be, will help pave the way for future breakthroughs and advancements in research of medical therapies. Abby's will go on to do amazing things in the future and there is not a more deserving recipient of the certificate of academic excellence by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. Signed by Joseph Abbe, by other year superintendent of schools. If I could have Abby come on. Can I take some pictures? Can I get some pictures right over here if you don't mind? And parents, family will have you up too? Yes, you can, yep. It's okay. Family? Wanna make sure you guys are in the picture. I'll be on the outside, you go on inside, thank you. And we'll get one of, uh, just ready yourselves. Did you get it?
I'm ready.
Oh, sorry.
You have a suggestion, take your mask down.
Yeah, you can take your mask down. So we less than fifteen minutes. And then just the family.
Thank you.
Thank you. Where are we going?
Uh, applying places that we'll get, but I'd love to go to Georgetown.
Georgetown is the dream. What else you got on the list?
I'm applying to Washington University, um, Johns Hopkins, Wesleyan, Vanderbilt.
Great, I never applied to any of them.
Congratulations.
Good luck, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks so much. The certificate of excellence, uh, superintendent's award of excellence is a local award as well. This student is well-deserving the superintendent's award of excellence. Courtney Cass. Uh, academic achievements coupled with her selfless dedication to her community embody the characteristics of this award. She is currently ranked number two in the graduating class and proudly serves as the number five academic honor societies. She's the president of the National Honor Society and our honor society. Additionally, Courtney has received several recognitions and awards, including the President's Education Award for Art and Scholastic Art Award Honorable Mention. Real leaders can solve problems in all kinds of ways and not to do so humbly and quietly. This is exactly how Courtney has approached her journey of blossoming into a leader at North High School. Courtney has stepped up to serve NHS by acting as a class officer, a member of the COVID reopening committee, leader of the Global Citizens Club, best buddies and more. She works a part-time job and has volunteered at St. Louis Hospital and B. College. She's not the student who is just looking to add line items to her resume. Instead, she is thoughtful and passionate about the project she involves herself. Courtney displays exceptional creativity, innovation, adaptability and kindness. She's admired by peers and staff alike and is undoubtedly deserving of this recognition. This year's recipient, actually before I do that, that's for you, since I put it, yeah, it's like opening the envelope. Uh, this year's recipient, recipient, if you could come up, is Courtney Cass. I get to spend some time with Courtney last night, actually, I think all of them last night.
Good night.
And family, if you'd like to come up? Congratulations as well.
Oh, um, I've applied a few places already.
Yeah.
Looking mostly in the Northeast, I applied to Fordham, Providence College, um, looking, I applied to Tufts.
Jumbles.
Yeah, I've quite a few colleges up here in the Northeast, so.
Do you have one that you're targeting?
Um, so far, I do really like Fordham, I heard that recently, and I really did like it, but yeah, I'm not really certain, so I'll look and see what happens.
Congratulations, thank you for sharing that. Two National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning Awards are being awarded tonight as well. Jordan Robbins is a student that embodies all that it means to be a true leader, commitment, inclusivity, compassion. But this is on the field and a club or in the classroom, and there is evident that Jordan has what it takes to be a role model to all. She's always optimistic and enthusiastic, which lifts the spirit of our North High School community. She is especially respected amongst her peers as she holds five leadership positions, treasurer of the class of twenty-two, historian of the History Honor Society, secretary of web master for Spanish Honor Society, president for Math Honor Society and captain of the Basri Lucresti. Jordan has worked diligently throughout her high school career, uh, career, and we commend her on all of her academic accomplishments and extracurricular activities. One of the awards for National School Development Academic Growth and Student Leadership goes to Jordan Robbins. Pledge allegiance to you as well. Just a question. Great, family? I feel really short here, I don't know why, I gotta go on my tippy toes. All right, Jordan, you're on the spot. What's it looking like for next year? Where are you applying?
Um, I'm applying to Boston College.
Eagles? Siders?
Um, US Army.
Awesome, stay near the deck?
Yeah.
For sure.
Thank you.
Congratulations. You go, Jordan, this is for you too. You. Last but not least this evening for the National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Leadership and Learning Awards. Many of you know this student because of her role with us. Throughout her time in high school, Zoe Duran has mentioned, has maintained a strong academic record and has been a role model to her peers. Through her hard work and a curiosity and dedication, she has launched her spark towards the top of her class. She has maintained high honors and has been recognized for academic achievements. Zoe's a proud member of five honor societies and even holds leadership positions in two of them. These academic accolades are a true testament to her academic effort and she's excited to take the next step in her education and plans to study engineering. Outside of the classrooms, Zoe dedicates her time to various school-related councils, best buddies in other clubs, part-time job gymnastics, the volunteer work, all while still prioritizing academics. Between her involvement in student council, site council, the principal's advisory committee, the superintendent's student advisory committee and as a strong, uh, school committee student representative, Zoe acts as a voice for the student body and seeks to make positive changes and contributions to the North High School community. Zoe has also proven herself to be a leader via board roles in her honor society student council, class council and as captain of the gymnastics team. Zoe has dedicated her time to help her peers and our school community, which makes her an exemplary role model for the entire community. The National School Development Council Academic Growth and Student Award goes to Zoe Duran. Sorry, I keep going the wrong direction. Great, family? Yeah? You got all dressed up?
I'm dressed up for this.
Hold on, that's a tuxedo for you.
Yeah.
It is, actually, yeah, I didn't say either.
You can take your socks, if you want to, but you don't have to. Oh, sorry, you gotta go this way, I keep forgetting.
You're good, Mark.
I am, I'm definitely aligned with it. Dinesh, why don't you stand in? Congratulations, and Joey, yep?
Um, my dream to go to MIT, um, that's aerospace engineering program, so that's why I come with those, but I'm also, I also applied in the Northeast during WPA and my work. I'd love to be in Boston.
Cool, congratulations, great schools as well.
Thank you.
Ladies, um, first of all, thank you so much to you and your families. Congratulations to all of the families. Thank you for your hard work, your commitment to everything about you that I read tonight. But in general, for one key phrase I always say, for being great kids. Congratulations to the families and thank you to the committee.
So, uh, just very quickly, I'll, I'll kind of throw something out there. So Joe mentioned that this was his, his favorite night. And not to speak for the whole committee, but I think it's probably one of those not our favorite nights as well. Uh, sometimes it's, it's really easy, I think, for us to forget what we're supposed to be here for. You know, we, we celebrate a lot of things in high school, um, but, but I think a lot too often we forget that we're in the academic achievement business. And it's nice when we do celebrate that. It was nice to see it last night at the National Honor Society presentation, and it's great to see it tonight, just see all the success, so. Congratulations to all of you, thank you very much for coming out tonight, appreciate it. If you'd like to, nobody will hold it against you if you now get up and walk out. But I will say this, there's going to be a rousing debate about exams coming up in a couple of spots, so your call. Okay, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna move on to the MCAS presentation. Mrs. O'Neil, are you here?
Thanks, folks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody, sorry, I was still muted. Um, good evening, thank you so much for having me tonight. Um, I'm going to give a brief overview of the two thousand twenty-one MCAS administration for Norton. Um, it was a very atypical year for all of us. Um, we began the year in hybrid and, uh, our students were only in school as, you know, half the time. However, we were still required to, um, participate in the annual administration of MCAS. Um, what the department did do for districts was they modified the assessment so that students in grades three through eight only took one of the two sessions in both ELA and math. Um, and it was a reduced time as well. The other thing that happened, um, the department shared was that there was no accountability data for districts and schools for this administration. It was, um, suggested that districts only use the MCAS data as a, as a tool for planning for instruction. Um, we have many other things that we use in, in place of MCAS, but, um, here we are. Um, so with the, um, changes in the administration, there was a lot of data that wasn't typically available to us. Um, we were able to take a look at overall student scores and proficiency scores, um, individual student item analysis and our subgroup data. We were really not able to get a strong look at the grade level standards, which is a tool that we typically use for instructional planning, as well as the classroom analysis by standard. Um, so we were falling a little bit short in using this data to plan for instruction because of the data that was shared with us. Um, I'm gonna share just a few highlights from each of the categories tonight with you. Um, I did give each of you, um, more detailed prints out, printouts. Um, overall, ELA was pretty consistent with previous year's data. We did, in spite of a global pandemic and, um, strange time in school, we did see increases in, in our fourth and fifth grade students. At the Yale School as well as our students in grades ten in terms of proficiency. Where we saw the most significant declines was at our middle school level, um, specifically grades seven and eights. And what we typically see there is that those, that is where a lot of the, um, rigor changes for students in terms of application and response to writing. Nearly all of our grade levels actually reduced the numbers of students that were in that not meeting range. Um, it used to be considered that warning or failure category, um, which was great to see. Um, and that specifically, overall, our students performed very, very well on the essay components and the structured responses. So, um, that's great to see that all the work that we've been doing in that area has been, um, beneficial. Um, for math, this is where we were in pretty close alignment with the state. A lot of, um, research has shown that, um, the school closure in the spring of two thousand twenty and the hybrid, um, schooling after that really caused a lot of deficits in the area of mathematics for students at all grade levels. Um, so that was definitely, our results here are definitely aligned with that. We saw a decrease in proficiency across all grade levels and student subgroups. Um, and really only our fourth grade students, um, remain pretty consistent with their previous data. Um, again, our teachers are working really hard with our students in terms of constructive response and short answers, where they have to explain their mathematical thinking. And they, it, it shows because our elementary students did really well in that area. In terms, oops, sorry about that, skipped one, in terms of science, um, specifically science, technology and engineering in grades five and eight. Um, there were definitely mixed results there. Um, a big increase at grade five over the last several years, um, and then a small decrease in grade eight. Where things did change was at the high school where we had our, um, freshmen taking either the biology, the physics test, and that was still a full assessment for a graduation, um, requirement. So we're still looking at that data. Um, participation rates overall were down significantly from previous years. Um, in a year where we have accountability determinations from the state, uh, they expect to see ninety-five percent participation, um, across all assessments and grade levels. So as you can see, the only grade level that actually met that ninety-five percent, um, requirement was grade three. All other grades fell underneath that, um, that threshold. Um, and we saw pretty significant declines in the, um, grade eight specifically. Um, there's a lot of reasons for this. Um, many of our students were home or in our DLA program this year. Um, and while we, uh, had opportunities for them to come in and test, not every family, um, chose to come in and, and to do that. Um, other families felt that, um, MCAS during a pandemic was a, a tough thing for students. Um, and therefore opted their children out for the year, so, um, next year, when we have accountability back, we'll have to make sure that we see some increases there. Um, so some of the things that we've done this year in terms of planning for instruction, over the summer, the district actually applied for and received two competitive grants. One was for a, um, summer or school vacation week, um, intervention program, which is what we offered to, um, students in grades five, K to five. We did virtual small group interventions for either a three-week or a six-week period. Um, we used the information that we had local data, student watch lists in order to select students. And the great thing about these virtual groups is they would see a teacher three days a week for three weeks or six weeks, um, for an hour at a time. The groups are very, very small. Um, and we had a lot of participation because they were totally virtual, so a student could be on vacation with their family. Um, we had kids zooming in from camp, um, in order to participate, so that was actually, um, very well received and something that I think I would like us to continue in the future. We also received a sixty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Education for a summer acceleration academy. This was, took place during one full week in August, um, where we offered early literacy, um, support for students in grades one and two. It was a full week, Monday through Friday, they came in around eight-thirty and left at two-thirty. Um, and were in small groups of no more than ten for this, um, session. Um, and then we also offered math for students in grades three, four, eight and ten. Um, we use our own highly qualified staff. We had students here at the Yale School and at the high school. Um, and it was really, really great to see the progress over the course of that week. Now that we're back, um, for the school year, we have had some staffing changes in order to support student learning all around. Um, we, and we actually brought back math interventionist positions. We haven't had these in a number of years. Um, so we have a math interventionist at each of the three elementary schools. Um, we also increased our Title One staffing, their, their full-time equivalent in K to five. We switched out a special education position at the middle school to a interventionist position. And then also the addition of the dean of students at the high school to really allow, um, our high school administration to support teaching and learning in the classroom. In terms of structures, we're really focusing on a acceleration model of learning, so therefore providing students with just-in-time supports to make sure that they are prepared to meet the needs and the challenges of the current grade level. Instead of just remediating, remediating, remediating and never really getting able to move forward. Um, we're supporting data-driven interventions at the, all of our schools and then supporting building-based PD to support data teams and intervention planning. Um, and finally, we are just starting or getting ready to launch our after-school tutoring program. Um, this will be a virtual tutoring program, which will take place in one-to-one or small groups depending on the student need. Um, it's open to all students and families. Um, we're using our own highly qualified educators here in Norton as well as some other, um, outside educators. Um, and this can really be at, for any grade level, for any topic, um, in supporting students in the areas where. um, and supporting students in the areas where they most need help. Um, so we're excited to get this started. I believe we're gonna probably roll out right after the Thanksgiving break. And that is it for the night. So if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate that. So I guess, Jen, as you know, my, my disdain for MCAS is, is well-known and I've, I've been very vocal about it over the years. Um, I, I guess, I guess, uh, one question I would have is do we, do we use these results to, to make some type of a performance evaluation for individual teachers over the year?
No, we do not.
Okay. Um, we think that would be a fair thing to do.
No, it's, 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 it's one assessment for students and for teachers. Um, I, I think that it allows us to have conversations about teaching and learning. So typically what practice happens is that teachers will review their own data and then they'll sit down as a team and say, okay, where were some of the things that as an overall grade level, we really had trouble with? Okay, so third grade had a difficult time with poetry. Let's take a look at our curriculum and our resources and see what we did and how we could potentially bulk it up for the upcoming year. Or there might be a conversation where I say to my colleagues, you know, my students didn't do well when it came to fractions, but I noticed that the rest of yours did. Can you maybe share with me what you've done? And it's, it's a learning process for them and a conversation about teaching and learning.
Sure. Okay. And I, I assume, I know you don't speak for them, but I assume the teachers would, would agree that it's probably not a fair assessment of other performance for the year.
I, I would say that's probably fair. Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
You know, I, I thought I saw you and then I didn't see you and I said, oh, I don't think she's here. Uh, it's, if you want to comment very briefly on it, you're more than welcome to. Yeah.
It's going to be very brief.
And Shannon, I can tell you right now, I, I don't think it's a fair assessment of your performance either.
We don't agree it's a fair assessment of our performance. We do not agree.
Yes. Thank you very much.
But just so that we're all on the same page. Yeah.
Yeah. No, I agree. I think it's, uh, it's silly to bet with somebody on one test. Okay, let's move on.
Can I just ask a quick question, Jen? Uh, can you just everybody to know, um, when you say that the Norton Middle School now has an interventionist, what does that actually mean? And what is that role?
So the, the role of the interventionist is, is really to provide support for students regardless if they're on an IEP or not. So it could be that um, a small group of students need support with a particular concept or, um, and they can go to that reading interventionist and, or that, I'm sorry, interventionist, not just reading math or other subjects as well. Um, and maybe get a small, quick intervention to kind of help get them caught up in terms of, of where they are and then go right back into the classroom.
And do we have an interventionist on staff at every school?
K to eight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, Seema, we will move on. Thank you very much. Give me some rest.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah.
Yes, we have the review and vote on the new, uh, the Norton High School calendar and mid-year slash final exam schedule. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that Dr. Dolman is on. I see him from afar. If he wants to join us here.
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, thank you for having me, uh, here tonight to kind of talk about this. And I was gonna give you a little bit of history of, uh, where we were um, with this and, uh, when I sort of arrived here and I think historically at Norton High School and then sort of the process we went through, um, and where we arrived with this proposal here tonight. Um, really, the, the big ask is, is we're looking to alter our calendar, um, where we do not have our, um, three, traditional three half-days, uh, in January and June, um, in order to really work with some of this data. But, um, to tell you a little background, uh, Norton High School, I think for as long as, uh, sort of some of the institutional memory went with some people I talked to at the school, um, has always had traditional mid-years and finals that counted for 10% of a semester grade. Both the first semester and second semester, so eventually, um, 20% of the final grade. And in order to facilitate those, um, there was basically an exam week, um, where with seven classes, one class would go on, uh, Tuesday. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday would each have two exams, um, on those days. Um, and then obviously they would be graded and be part of, figured into, um, the final grade for that semester. During the COVID year, um, we had our mid-year exams as we typically would. And then when we kind of came together in order to talk about grading practices, uh, based on the closure, we kept that as 10% of the final grade, um, and then sort of averaged out the other three quarters. So first, second, and then, uh, the sort of second half of the year. We're all worth 30%. Last year, uh, when we had our reopening committee, uh, we discussed certainly, you know, the idea of final exams and mid-year exams, especially based on the hybrid model and the sort of logistics of that and the amount of time that would take in order to assess people. That was one of the big obstacles. We also didn't feel like it was something that we wanted to basically subject students to, um, as far as the 10 or 20% of their final, uh, or semester grade and final grade respectively. Um, so we eliminated final and mid-year exams last year during the pandemic. Um, this year coming back, uh, we, we wanted to kind of take a very close look at this as far as what we wanted to do, whether we wanted to return to our traditional model, whether we wanted to eliminate exams entirely, or whether or not we wanted to kind of find a compromise that was going to really balance consistency for students, but also give teachers the ability to try experimental or uh, sort of alternative assessments as well as those subjects that really felt a traditional exam was the best way to assess what it was they were trying to get their students to learn, would have the option to do that as well. Um, so we tried a, a new process, um, that was also trying to get as much input from departments utilizing some of the structures we had at the school. Uh, so if you're unfamiliar with the high school, we have our greater, uh, group of teachers. Um, we have academic coordinators of each of those departments that meet basically monthly in order to talk about issues of, uh, you know, practice, school climate, all sorts of things at the academic coordinator table. Um, but what we wanted to do was to try to have rich conversations about assessment, um, about uh, sort of what it was that we were trying to get students to, to learn and be able to do in particular, um, in sort of relationship to our acceleration roadmap that Jen talked a little bit about as far as trying to provide strong instruction and accelerating, uh, through some of that, uh, sort of learning loss that we might have experienced because of the pandemic. Um, and so in order to facilitate that, we built a sort of shared decision-making model, um, where academic coordinators would have these conversations at their departments, would bring it to the table, talk about a particular issue, um, send it back to the departments. Once we had kind of a statement of where we were going to receive additional feedback before arriving at a decision. Um, and that's what we did here, um, with the mid-years and finals as we, uh, sort of started talking about this at the very beginning of the year. Went through a few cycles of having departments provide feedback, um, as far as what they believed the best way forward to assess students would be. Um, and then we, um, sort of crafted a statement, had additional feedback and then ended up kind of where we are here, um, which is the document that you see in front of you. Um, and what it tried to balance was, as I mentioned, sort of teacher ability and flexibility to assess students the way they felt was the best. Um, but also to have some consistency across students who are in the same course, um, that they would have consistent experiences when it comes to preparation for any assessment, um, that they'd have a consistent, uh, assessment, um, so that the courses were, were kind of consistent across all students who were taking them. Um, one big thing that we did when we looked at this, um, was decided that the 10% and 20% of the students' final grade was something we no longer wanted to support. We felt that was too high stakes and that that was something that should not be part of it. Um, so we eliminated that as sort of discrete grades, um, and put, uh, our mid-years and finals as part of the second and fourth quarter grades respectively. Um, we encouraged, part of it was to look into alternative assessments. Um, so we have some departments that are going to be experimenting with that over the course of the year. Um, sort of notably, our English department is looking at accumulative, uh, actually our world language department as well, looking at cumulative portfolios as finals. The other thing that we were doing with this is doing it sort of in tandem with our professional development arc this year, where we're really digging into assessments, making sure that they were assessing what we wanted them to assess, having a lot of collaborative discussions about common assessments and then taking a look at the data that those common assessments produced in order to make some really informed decisions about things that we needed to, what we're calling just-in-time interventions or provide support to students who might have missed key, uh, understandings from last year. But also to make sure that we're on the same page, sort of across, uh, all of these different departments and grade level teams. Um, so those two sort of ideas here, what, what mid-years and finals are going to be is a shared decision. And also our professional development to really dig into our assessments and try to make sure that they were representing what it was, um, that were the key understandings we wanted for our students. It's kind of where we ended up, um, with this. Um, we feel it's really important, uh, to have sort of the time, uh, for teachers who are investing quite a bit in developing new assessments, um, in order to, uh, be able to really score those, um, to use that data effectively, collaborate, look at the data, make decisions about the curriculum moving forward, um, as well as to inform, um, you know, the, what the students are learning and obviously, um, you know, be able to tell basically, uh, where they need to go in the second half of the year here as well, um, and, and sort of working together in order to do that. So that, that's kind of the backstory, uh, with this. As I mentioned, we have a lot of, uh, sort of exciting things happening. Uh, it's not a return to, um, you know, total high-stakes exams. Some departments are going away from them entirely. Um, our business department is only doing projects. Um, our world language department, as I mentioned, is really deep into the proficiency model, which they're doing a great deal of professional development with. So the assessments that they have crafted are very aligned to what their outcomes are. Our history department is planning to eliminate all objective content, so not looking to have any multiple choice questions where they're really digging into skills based on reading and writing. Um, so we're doing a lot of things to really examine, um, these large assessments. Um, and, uh, to make sure that they're really valid to what we want to accomplish. Um, one thing that came out in these discussions, um, as you can see there, is to preserve, um, the cumulative assessment, that there are a lot of, uh, many departments particularly believe that, uh, an exam is the best way to assess, um, their, uh, topic or their content. Um, it's something that they feel like in the secondary or post-secondary level, that's the way that their content will continue to be assessed and that's prepare students for that. Um, both the preparation of the exam as well as actually the stamina to sort of take a high-stakes exam was an important learning outcome. Not just, uh, the actual content of it, um, but sort of what we were referring to as some of the behavioral expectations of that, we feel is a critical thing, uh, to prepare students for life after, after high school. Um, and that the, uh, you know, thinking about feedback of some of colleagues from, from the secondary level, um, and seeing students going, or sorry, the post-secondary level, seeing students going to college, not necessarily able to, uh, be able to sit for, uh, a long exam and, and having very difficulty preparing for that. Um, is one of the reasons why we really wanted to kind of double down, um, on our, uh, you know, making sure that the preparation for the exams is very consistent as well, not just the exam itself, um, but really digging into, uh, you know, having a consistent approach to study guides, a consistent approach to teaching students the sort of discrete skills of studying, um, for something that extends back to the beginning of the year, um, in order to prepare really consistently. Um, so, uh, that's what you kind of see before you. Um, and as I said, sort of our ask here from this, from, uh, the academic coordinator table, um, and from, you know, based on this consensus decision from our faculty, um, is to really try to, uh, have that time, um, for student or for teachers to really dig in to these assessments, um, come away with really valuable data in order to inform their instruction moving forward.
All right. Uh, thank you very much. I'm gonna, if, if the school committee's okay with it, I'm gonna open it up to, um, some of the audience members. So I think, you know, this, before I do, I do have a, just a couple of questions. The, the first one is, you, you mentioned, um, you mentioned the, the current the current composition of the grades, 10%, um, midterms, 10% in the finals, 20% cumulative. There, there wasn't a discussion on what the new numbers were going to be. Is, is it still potentially high-sticking, high-stakes exams as you call them for everybody? Or have we now looked at those numbers and said, you know what, we're not going to do that anymore. It's going to be considerably less than that. And if so, what are the numbers?
So it's going to depend, uh, on some of the common departmental practices. So the way that we sort of started this year was really digging into some of our, our grade data and I don't know all of them off the top of my head, but different, uh, departments designated, uh, certain amounts for assessments versus what we, uh, kind of mastery assessments that we were calling them, um, and then other things for academic habits. So the idea would be that the mid-year and final would be figured in as, and just another test, um, within that, uh, sort of group of, uh, grade data there. So if, for instance, I know the math department, 65% of their grade is driven by, uh, some of those tests over the course or quizzes and tests over the course of the quarter, the mid-year and the final would be one of those. Um, so it's difficult to say, you know, what percentage of total assessments in the quarter that would be. And then how that would impact the greatest, you know, be whatever percentage of that, of that, you know, larger percent. So it's difficult to sort of put, uh, a handle on it. And I know that some, you know, departments would, would, uh, make those mid-years and finals worth more or less, uh, depending on sort of where they saw it as, uh, as the best way to assess the students.
Ethan, can I just figure back on that a little bit too? So if you, if you look at it, if you move your current 10% mid-year and your current 10% final, you move the 10% of the mid-year into the second term. That means that each term is now at 25% overall. It's not 20 for first term, 20 for second, 10 for the mid-year, 20 for the third, 20 for the fourth, 10 for the final. Everything moves into, into the terms.
Slow it down.
Sure. So the prior, the prior distribution of how you get, the prior distribution of how you get to a final grade is first term 20%, second term 20%, mid-year 10%, third term 20%, fourth term 20%, final exam 10%. You add that all up, you get your grade out of 100. Now you're going into the, the assessment that the students take moves from a 10% into part of a total 25% of the second quarter. Right. Now, how each department does grading can be, for example, 60% is tests, 20% is quizzes and 20% is homework and to class participation or whatever the makeup of that department is. That grade would be part of the 60% of that term for that course.
So, so if, if I had the midterm and the final is 40% of the respective semesters, then they would still be going 10% of your cumulative grade.
Correct. So the question would be, as you look at assessment during the second term, we have to make sure that there's a balance of assessment taking place so that the mid-year doesn't all of a sudden become exactly what you just said.
Right. All right. So, um, and again, I want to open it up to, to some of the students, but just to point out some, some logical inconsistencies we have here. So, and for those of you who didn't see it coming, we just talked about the MCAS and how we don't think that a singular test is a, a fair way to assess a year's worth of work. And here we are, still, still allowing for that to happen. I, I know that we're saying we're going in a different direction, but we're still allowing for it to happen. And I think the school committee historically has been really clear about the fact that we don't really love the way that that's done. I personally think it's pretty antiquated, to be honest with you, and the other thing I want to point out is, we, we discussed this, is if we need to do this sort of, prepare to do it in the future. If, if you follow that train of logic, then that means that they're not currently prepared to do it. And yet we're taking that as, as a big chunk of their grade. I, I, I don't know that that's the best way to do that. I think if you want to prepare them, then give them a big test, but use it as, as a data point. As you say, I don't know how you're gonna use the, the finals one as, as a data point, but maybe you can use the midterms for that. But to, to then take that and say, okay, this is going to be a big chunk of their assessment, I think is a mistake. So anyways, if you want to open up, is everybody okay if I open up?
Is it all right if I just respond to that real quick? As far as what you're saying, and, and I, I agree with you, um, as far as like moving away from standardized tests, uh, i- is really valuable. I think what we identified sort of at the high school here is it is a reality. And actually, we, we've sort of discussed some of this at, at PDs as well, is that the world that students are going to be entering does still have these very restrictive exams, um, basically in any, uh, you know, profession that you want to go to, whether it be a teacher or, you know, a master electrician or even the military or those types of things, has a, a large exam as far as, uh, kind of a gatekeeping piece of, of, uh, you know, antiquated assessment data.
I know one time I've had, had an issue with having to worry about how to take a test. 30 years I've been in the working world, it's not coming up. And then I, I agree that there are some professions where you have to take one once for exams, et cetera. Uh, I, I just, again, I don't know if this is, I, I think it's just an antiquated way to, to assess holistically a child's year-long performance. And, and again, I don't want to speak for the whole school committee, but I think we've been fairly, um, fairly direct and forward with that over, over time. Um, and, and the fact that we don't have some kind of a handle on, on where we're going to cap these out, um, is, is a little bit disappointing to me, quite honestly. So, but I, I do want to open it up to the, to the students if okay, and then we can kind of circle back to this afterwards. So, Kat?
Yes. So I first off want to start by saying so, I'm Anne Catherine Powers. I included a copy, I'm going to say, and today at school, I went around and this was all just today. I got 75 signatures from students who agree that midterms and finals are not a fair assessment and that they should be abolished. So, just that. So, here we go. The use of some new assessments as a way for teachers to see or reinforce what students have learned has been in place for a long time. Too long. There was a time when they may have been more effective, back before the internet was used as widely and as commonly as it is now. But that time is over. The arguments many teachers present for midterms include the need to learn how to sit for a test as we will be taking these kind of tests in college. And if you are not in college, there is even a test for the military. Said teachers go on to say that midterm and final examinations are challenging and prepare us for next steps. Neither of those concerns hold much weight. Learning how to sit for a test, we've been taking tests most of our school careers. We have taken MCAS from our third grade through sophomore years, and upperclassmen have taken the SATs at least once. We have sat for We have sat for multiple hour long tests. This is not something we need to learn how to do. It is an exorbitant waste of time we could be spending on learning, on projects connecting the content of our classes to our communities, exploring avenues in which they could take us possible career paths. You want to prepare us for the future? Okay, great. Maybe we could have a career day in which you help us explore a possible career path and other areas of study we may never have thought about. The argument that these tests are preparing us for college is weak. Our whole lives, teachers have claimed to be preparing us for the next step. For middle school or high school, for AP classes, there's always going to be something to prepare for. But living life solely for the challenges you may or may not face in the future drains it of joy. We should be having fun in our classes, having inspiring, interesting discussions, preparing for tests where we are not allowed to collaborate. How is that preparing for the real world? In the workplace, people are on teams, marketing teams, management teams, and they work together to accomplish a common goal. They write proposals for new ideas for their superiors. Sitting silently in rows for two hours, taking a test on a subject we stayed up all night preparing for, memorized facts that will slip out of our minds the next day is not a practice that will be a part of our lives. Preparing for a presentation or writing a paper? Yes. Sitting alone, taking a test? No. I love to learn. I have loved school ever since I was tiny, but now not so much. Math class consists of the teacher showing us how to solve certain kinds of abstract problems, testing us on them, teaching us how to do more abstract problems, followed by testing us on them, is a never ending cycle. Centering school around tests shifts the focus from the learning to the outcome, from the process to the end result. I invite you all to consider, is that true learning? Is that why we sit in these classrooms day after day, five days a week for thirteen years? If you were in our place, how would you feel? Finals and midterms do not encourage improvement, which is what school should be about. It is counterintuitive to put so much emphasis on one test. One test that teachers do not allow students to improve upon. No extra credit, no corrections, no retakes. That does not encourage growth. Having the opportunity to learn and improve represents the beauty of education. Please consider the perspective of the students who are taking these exams, who have been through drastic changes in our lives with this pandemic. We learned through experiencing COVID that we need to focus on our relationships with people, on living life to the fullest. Picking right back up where we left off, carrying on with business as usual, discounts the positive lessons we learned. Letting high school truly grow through these experiences. COVID was an opportunity to take a step back and really think about what should be a part of our lives and what we would be better off though. We have been isolated long enough. Continuing to assess us in an outdated manner that is isolated from our peers only serves to increase our stress levels. Thank you for taking the time to consider those perspectives of the student body in our basement.
Thank you.
Good job, Kat. Excellent.
Leah has some points. Yeah, I
What she said.
But basically just we're really looking to think of a way to replace these traditional exams with something that will actually get us involved in our community and involved with our peers and involved in actually our learning process. Even if that's something like community service days where we all catch up on some of that time that we missed during COVID, because a lot of us who wanted to get involved in the community haven't really had the chance to. And we still want to, even if not just for the hours, it's the experience of it. And I think that incorporating something like that, even if just like a mental health day of like, you know what? You made it through pandemic, you've made it through the year, you're doing good, like just a reward for students because if anything, the idea of having midterms and finals still in any sense throughout this whole process, it feels like a punishment to the student body. Additionally, we've already lost enough time on learning through COVID. And I know that for me personally, I want to continue learning all that stuff that I missed. I want to keep sitting in the classroom and learning and taking stuff in instead of having to pause and take review days and take the test and then go over what we didn't get on the test and then finally keep moving forward. I just want to keep moving forward and I think everyone loves students. And in terms of preparation for tests, like she said, we've taken tests all of our lives. I know that I have at least three a week. I I feel that it's something that we're not preparing to take tests anymore. I think we're just preparing for this test and
and another thing that I thought of too, when Mr. Dolman was saying that, you know, regardless in college, we have these assessments. My mom went to Vassar and she mostly did papers and projects and she went way back then. She graduated like ninety six. So like, so like
The internet.
So like
Younger than me.
So especially taking that into account, like even even then colleges were starting to move away from that. That's like a liberal arts college. It's hard to get into. It's sister school of Yale. So the argument that is for college is getting increasingly less and less important.
Questions? So I think the student body has for a number of years recognized where I stand under the year, final exams, right? I am not a fan of traditional assessments. That goes to my teaching days at Sharon High when I was a teacher and at the Vogue. As a principal, I moved my staff in a direction to to get away from traditional assessments. And I did meet with the leaders of the of the faculty, the academic coordinators and the leaders that make up Mr. Dolman's leadership team the other day. And I told him that in general, I would be supportive of moving in a direction where traditional assessments down the line, if you will, would not be part of what we do at going high school. Your your commentary this evening, both of you, and I know from other students that I've spoken to is is in many ways, I think, spot on. The question that I have is when we look at assessment that that, you know, and the word accountability is another word that comes into play. You're all going to be assessed in some way in college if you continue to do that, or the workplace, or the military, all three of them, right? But it's traditionally in many ways, not a traditional test, except maybe one final assessment, bar exam, medical, that type of stuff. I can see that nursing, very traditional in their assessment. And there's probably other fields that I'm misrepresenting or not not directly. One of the reasons why I've always fought against MCAS is because if I was a student, I would have struggled with MCAS my entire life. It's not who I am as a learner. And I know it's not where a lot of my students are, regardless if they have a learning challenge or if they're an AP student. And so the overarching issue for me is how do we move on high school? Traditional assessment to assessment in two different ways. We have what we call assessment of learning and assessment assessment for learning. I'm going to suggest that I'm about for learning because the culminating activity for you guys is to give you critical reading and writing skills, the ability to think, the ability to, especially in today's age, stop looking at that cell phone and have a conversation, right? And any of us that have worked with business people will tell you, I don't care about the content. I'll teach them the content. I need them to have the personal skills to be able to sell the product or do whatever. So the push from Mr. Dolman, Ms. Benner and the high school staff is to move, and I don't want to speak for the Mr. Dolman who's here tonight, he can as well, but what I heard was an understanding that we need to move in a direction where we have assessment, but we have assessment for learning that is taking place within our schools and not what some would consider an I gotcha assessment. I review the data, as the principals know, I review the data about midyear and final exams, and it's clearly does not help overall grades. Every so often it might, but clearly usually brings a B plus eighty eight to an eighty seven B plus. So it's not a drastic change in some cases. The other part of it is we have students who specifically coming out of COVID right now that are really struggling with their academics. They're struggling with coming to school. I don't know what excites anybody about coming to school for a half day to take a test, right? So I think you guys know that. The question is, the committee can control the calendar, right? Set the calendar. The administration and the teachers really in general can can control if we have an assessment. If they decide not to go to half days and say, no, we're not supporting half days, which is also a message that they're sending that they don't support the exams. That doesn't stop the administration, the the administration and the teachers from still having the exams during full days. Not the best scenario. I believe I said that to one of you earlier. As a former principal, it's a nightmare, right? Sixty percent, seventy percent of the kids are going to go home because there's only review for some kids that they want to take it. Maybe the AP kids stay for classes. What I will tell you is this, I think your voices and the voices of many of us who believe in change and reforming this is being is is being heard. I've informed the committee that it's a process, right? It's a process. I don't disagree with you that coming out of COVID, going to four half days is necessarily the best idea. Some students would probably say it is because they may not even study for the test. Right? They're just going to come in blank. I mean, we know what happens. I mean, it is what it is. So the question becomes, how do we really have YouTube? And Zoe who's here tonight and all the students listening tonight are out there. How do we get students to recognize that assessments are going to be part of your future? The question is, how do we assess students away from the traditional form? Where as Mr. Savas said earlier, you know, can we, should we be grading teachers on their teaching ability for one test? Clearly, the answer to that is no. Clearly, the answer to that is no. I would argue that our staff, and I believe they will, will move in that direction where students are going to have choices on how to. Some kids might want to sit down for a fifty question, multiple choice, and they're done. Some kids want to work together in a group and do the inquiry based presentation portfolio. It's wonderful to hear from Mr. Dolman tonight, the clarity of what some of the departments are already thinking of doing and not just giving you the traditional test. We know that, and this is not a knock. Math and science have a tradition, or tradition, it's a fact. But they can move into, I'm sorry.
Which makes a lot of sense.
It does. So if students were now coming into a quote, traditional test in math and science, but five other tests that are not traditional. That's a move in the right direction for me because what that means is you may be really good at the other five ways of doing things, but not necessarily as good with the traditional. And I'm just using you as an example because I know you're a fantastic student. So so to me, that's a move in the right direction. To just say no testing, I don't know if that's the right direction. I I've always since day one, since I've been here, this is my ninth year, I've said we should be moving to assessments that allow for students' strengths to be part of of their assessment process. So that's where I'm at. Hold heartedly support you. Maybe I'm being a little bit more of a an old snail, moving a little snow slower, but I do find that this moves us in the right direction.
So or sorry, do you mind?
Ethan, I'm just interrupt you real quick.
Sure.
I don't think that they're arguing for no test. I don't think that's
Yeah, we're not, no, it's that's we understand that our learning needs to be assessed and our teachers are a lot smarter.
So what I do, I do want to point out, you know, the the idea of of these high stakes exams and whether it's ten percent, whatever it is, you know, as the year goes on, I do want to bet you that if you ask any teacher and any any teacher that is paying attention in class, they can tell you, pick a student, say this student, that student, whatever, they can tell you that's an A student, that's a B student, that's a C minus student, that's a B plus student. They pretty much know, is my guess. And I would tell you, if you look at, if you look at, so we have three students in the room right now, I think. And and my guess is I I know them all. So I I'm guessing that they're probably pretty much A students, right? If you if you look at the impact of these high stakes exams, it's like a reverse Belker, right? The the A students, the only thing they can really do is get hurt by it. The 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 people who have done the work consistently through the year have the highest risk essentially. And and the the students that are at the bottom have the highest reward. The kids in the middle, well, they, you know, they can go either way. It can go up or down a grade, but but it really, I mean, it really is adversely affecting the kids who have done done the work and and worked hard throughout the full year. And and I think what I'm saying, and I I mentioned this earlier today was I I think we're missing that the point is not necessarily that we have to have alternative assessments. I I I like those ideas. I agree with them. And I understand where math and science may not have that that flexibility. My point is more, I think we're looking at this the wrong way. We want to look at it like, hey, the the holistic body of the students' work throughout the year is is what should be important. I I get it. Like, listen, I I I want our kids to be prepared. I think they will be, but they'll be prepared because we are great at educating. Not because we're teaching them to take tests. I I want us to be great. I want this district to be great. I think this district can be great. Absolutely one hundred percent. I think we have the the people in place. I think administration, the students are ready. You got to get past this idea of, hey, sit everybody down for a three hour test. It's garbage. It's it's antiquated, man. And and I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it at that because I I think you guys all know what I, how I feel, you know?
You said twice.
Yeah, I'll I'll I'll
I think Mr. Dolman.
I also have someone with their hand raised here as well.
Let's let's go to Ethan, then we'll go to the the hand raising.
Sure. Just to comment on, I thank you very much, girls, for for sharing your your perspective here. And I think it's extremely powerful and it's one I find myself very philosophically aligned with. Especially as a former history teacher, project based learning was something I felt very, very strongly about and that there were alternative ways to assess. But I did also come across situations where I don't know much about history or excuse me, I don't know much about math or science. So I do, you know, part of the reason why we crafted this was to actually sort of give that those people who are content experts, the flexibility in order to determine the best way to assess students and and, you know, I think that we are moving away from sort of high stakes, things that are are simply about the assessment of what has happened in the past and helping to inform the future. And I know that there are some practices that our departments have put in place in order to help that kind of iteration where there are taking things that you've tried, that you've been assessed on, allowing for corrections in in various ways in order to try to learn from those mistakes. I also think that that there is a lot going into designing these assessments. You know, as I mentioned, certainly just taking the history department as an example, sort of a move away from objective kind of memorization type of assessment is a really important step. Where if there is an authentic assessment where you're given a novel text to read and then respond in writing, that's a valuable piece of data that those those teachers can use in order to continue to develop what they're going to do in the second half of the year. And so the biggest thing I kind of wanted to preserve for with this proposal, and I think we did from the academic coordinators table, was just that we were trusting the teachers in those individual grade levels to make the best decisions for that grade level based on who they know of the students, what they know of the content as experts, and that we were trusting them to to sort of do that. I do, as I said, I I think Dr. Byda said, we do want to move forward with sort of these alternative ways of demonstrating learning and being assessed for learning. And just to sort of let you know where where we are, one of the things that we're doing is as an administration, trying to build some team members at the school as well is looking to apply for grants in order to do project based learning. PD, we actually applied for one last year through PBL Works, which is one of the, they talk about gold standard, project based learning. And the things that you described in your essays are really, really valuable, but they don't happen overnight. And there are things that we need to work towards and have training for for teachers to see how maybe they can take something that they're used to sort of assessing in a very discreet manner on an exam to a better assessment, but it doesn't happen or a one that is more of a project based or alternative assessment and one that is more assessing for learning, but it just doesn't happen overnight. And I think that as this is the proposal that we have in front of us is trusting teachers to make the right decisions and it is moving in that direction. Although as we as we see, you know, it's not maybe moving as fast as as some of us would like.
So can I just?
Somebody had a hand up. We'll go to them first and we'll circle back to them. Jan, we have a hand up.
Lauren, you are should be able to speak if you unmute.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I'm
Why don't you introduce yourself so people know who you are?
Sorry. So this is Lauren Bukowski. I know most of you. I'm the academic coordinator for the science department. I've been at the high school teaching science for eighteen years. I'm listening to what everybody's saying and I'm really thinking that you have been given the wrong impression about what we as teachers want for this. The vast majority of us, when we say we're giving midterms and finals and we're in favor of them, the vast majority of us are planning some sort of alternate assessment. Particularly for the classes where they already have a high stakes test. So the courses where kids are going to be taking MCAS or the AP courses. For example, in my AP chemistry course, I don't give a final exam. I give them a final project where they have to use their chemistry skills in the lab and actually learn things, you know, or apply, I shouldn't say that, apply what they've learned. You know, I hear math and science being thrown under the bus as well. Yeah, yeah, of course, they're going to do the traditional three hour test. Actually, science is talking about doing a lot of different things and most of the departments are. So I just want to make it clear that part of the reason we're asking for these half days is because evaluating alternate assessments is actually much more difficult and time consuming than evaluating traditional tests. It's really easy to run a fifty cat question Scantron through, and now you've got your grade. We are planning on doing alternative type assessments for the most part, not completely, but it's not like, oh, we we just want to give a traditional test and have an extra half day off. These things take more time to evaluate correctly. And I just want to make sure it's clear that everybody in the high school is not saying we want to keep everything the way it always used to be. We want a super high stakes test. The idea is that this test, you know, no, I'm not going to make it the only test of the term and make it be sixty percent of the grade. It it's we want to get away from it being a humongous part of the grade and have it just be a regular assessment. we, we want to get away from it being a humongous part of the grade and have it just be a regular assessment that happens to assess more material than normal.
Thank you for your comments. And I, I applaud you on the use of the applicable, uh, assessments. I think that's the way to go. Um, and then we do understand that we're, we're really talking about the half days here because as Joe said earlier, um, in my opinion and Joe's, I don't think we authorize with the school committee to, to dictate the types of assessments that we're going to give. Uh, but I, but we do appreciate the comments. Uh, Sherry?
So I mean, I, I guess, I don't know if I, it's even worth saying anything because we don't really have any say. Um, yeah, I think that Lauren, I appreciate that, that explanation because it makes a little bit more sense. It's just my thought, you know, in listening to, you know, both of our students here speak, these are two strong students, right? And they're talking about the stress that they're going to feel coming out of COVID, going into these situations. You know, if we're not, if, if this is something that we're trying to move towards and it's a slow growth, is there a happy medium where maybe we can just kind of pause for a second? Let these kids have a, because it still isn't even normal for these kids. Let's be honest. It's not normal, right?
No, but let's have, yeah, we're still in growth.
Exactly.
Like we're taking.
It is not normal for them. So can we just take a pause and let these kids have this a little bit more than halfway normal school year until we figure out how we move forward with these assessments? Do we, do we have to move? And I know it's not our call and that's fine. I'm just bringing it up because when I have two students standing in front of me telling, talking to me about stress, um, and they're strong students, I can, I worry more as a social emotional district about the other students who are not as strong. That concerns me greatly coming out of this pandemic, that we're going to hurt our students more than we are going to help them over testing.
So I, I, I think, um, I think a couple of things. First of all, I'm, I, since the, I think the comments directed at me, I'm not throwing math and science under the bus. What I suggested was that the math and sciences have a more traditional outside of Norton, in Norton, in the real world format. And in the example I used earlier was nursing as an example. So just wanted to be clear about that. Um, I, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me and I'll ask Principal Dolman to potentially collect that information of what, what departments are doing for midyear, which is, uh, two months away. Uh, let's get the data. Which department is actually doing a traditional test for this date? Hold off on your decision of the half data till the December meeting, which is in early December. And then you'll have data about what is traditional and what is not traditional.
So can I make a suggestion, Joe?
Yeah.
Rather than hold off, because I, I think it's important for them to know.
I think it's important for the teachers and the students to know what's happening.
It's important for them to know what, what they have for time.
I'm just suggesting to you that, that if we're going to make, uh, the big generalizations that I was making and others were making, let's stop the generalizations and get the facts about who's doing traditional, who's not, what are the assessments, and trust to Ethan's comment, trust the teachers to give us the information to be able to give to the public.
I, as, as you said earlier, I, I love the idea of denying them the half days and sending a message that we really are not favored as exams. However, that being said, I think it's short sighted. Um, so, so I, I'm not in favor of denying those half days. Potentially what is a, a solution is rather than have them come in and tell us what you're doing and then we can make the vote. I would, I would welcome them to come in even after the midterms and say, hey, here are some alternative things we did, and here is the data that we're looking at.
Fantastic idea.
Et cetera. I think, I think that's more used constructively. Well, yeah, hopefully they're doing it.
Midterms as like a test.
I mean, I assume they're doing it.
I think it would be important to do part A and part B. Part A would be to make sure that, um, as a high school that, um, regardless of our individual view as a department or individuals within the department, that the principal sits down and collects that data from the ACs and presents it at least to my office.
And they may know.
And I can share.
This part, but I think we should have students come in and tell us their thoughts on them as well.
Right. I, I don't have a problem. I, I think anyway, the, the best way to move in the right direction, in my opinion, in issues like this, is to take a look at the goal. The goal is to change this high stakes assessment into an assessment for learning. Right? That's the key. Like, it's not just regurgitate what you know. It's about how do those skills, and I think, I don't think, I know our teachers do this. Right? I know our teachers do this. The question is to Lauren, uh, to, excuse me, Ms. Bukowski's comment about, um, that there is a move within, to move in that way. Let's, let's figure out, uh, through the principal's office, he trusts the staff, I trust the staff to, to gather that information about what students are going to be doing um, in, in each of the departments. I know some of them are already announcing that they're doing cumulative folders or finals, but what does that mean for midyears? I don't know. And get that data, support the calendar presented by the principal tonight, and we do both the pre and the post you just suggested on how did midyears go? What did really happen? How did, how did it come up? What was the good about it? What was the bad about it? And take the perspective of staff and the students, you may find out that actually you started to align.
So I had a couple of things real quick, if you don't mind. So I, I took this a little, a little bit different when we were talking about this. I mean, I can tell you, I've been to college. I wasn't prepared to go to college like most eighteen, nineteen year olds were. You know, I went from a small town to a medium sized city. But I can tell you, one hundred percent, every assessment I took, that information's gone. But what I can tell you is every skills assessment I did while in college, I can tell you my projects because it was something that as a student, I got to choose. I got to use the skills my teacher taught me in my presentation.
Got to apply.
Yes. And this was before the internet slightly. Um, but like, you know, when.
You wrote your dinosaur.
Yeah, I wrote my dinosaur. So for me, you know, and working in the real world, you know, I, I don't like to hear we're preparing kids for the real world when it comes to testing or this or that, because quite frankly, if we're preparing kids for the real world, we should be teaching them taxes, checkbooks, things like that, not, not to sit here and fill in the bubbles. I can tell you, I've been working for thirty years and I've never filled in a bubble sheet at work and had my, my, my boss scan it. Um.
But I also think you heard tonight, that's where.
Yeah, I do.
District is that the, the high school is going in a different direction than that.
And, and that's my, my second point is, is we, we stress that we are a technologically savvy district. So to me, a good skills assessment is students working with their technol, you know, technological aptitude and putting together presentations or PowerPoints or, you know, in history class, you, you pick a topic and you dress the part and you do a presentation as opposed to standing there answering questions. So I, I applaud the work, you know, Principal Dolman and his, as ACs have done. Um, I'd like to see more of it, you know, and I, and Miss, Miss Bukowski as well, uh, you know, science. You know, I'd like to see science go away. I, I mean, I think, you know, I'm not going to throw math under the bus, but I think math is probably the one that there's not much you can do with math when it comes to, um, a presentation or something like that. But, um, you know, I, I think we, you know, we trust our administration, we trust our high school staff, uh, to make the best decisions. And obviously we have strong students that, that want their opinions heard as well. So, um, I think we're moving in the right direction, but albeit it could be a little slow for some taste, but, um, for sure, I think we're moving in the right direction.
Is it okay if I make a point?
Sure.
All right.
When have I ever stopped?
I, um, I, first of all, I think that, uh, Ms. Cohen, your point was really good about, we just, we're not asking for them to be abolished completely. But we were able to do it last year when we made the decision to just take a pause for a second and kind of assess our situation and then. I think that's kind of what we're looking for. But even if we can't necessarily achieve that this year, I think what we're looking for is some sort of a compromise because the grading percentage is still going to be fairly large. And especially for like, for myself, I'm a junior. I've never taken a final exam, but the grade, the year where my grades are going to be the most important is the year I'm going to take my first final exam and have those grades affect it, which is stressful for me. Um, and I'd like to at least propose the idea that I know seniors, um, if they achieve a ninety or above, they are exempt from the finals, not the midterms, but the finals. And I think that a possible way to go would be to see that if a student has achieved mastery in a course, either for midterms or finals, if they're able to, you know, score ninety or above, I think that they should be able to at least have the option to be like, okay, I understand the material. And as just a little bit of a, some sort of a relief, just to say, okay, you, you understand this enough. You're exempt from the midterm. You're exempt from the final. At least just to alleviate some of that stress of like, I'm not going to keep my good grade. I'm not going to keep it. Yeah.
I don't disagree. I mean, it, it makes a lot of sense. So.
And then for math in particular, um, I have had conversations with the head, the math department. And I, um, used some of her, what she said in the beginning of them, and then I, and I used rebuttal to say that it didn't make sense. Um, I think that she is being close minded about the future. And she's stuck on assessments as the way to assess, but the problem is like my class in particular, like, like, most of us are confused most of the time. And then we just, and then she's like, okay, then you take a test on it. And it's just like, it's not helping us to learn. The test isn't for learning. If we take a test, we're done and then we move on. It's not, there's no like going back and making sure that we understand. She just keeps piling on more things and it's having to take one giant test on math in particular. I had troubles with this. I had an A average in math my sophomore year. I did not do well on my midterm and it, it brought my average down.
So the experience, the, the experience of midyear and final, uh, final exams, um, your, uh, Leah, your comments about the, uh, mastery and, and student grade and exemption, those are things that can all be brought, brought back to the principal's office for further discussions. We have made exceptions in the past, as you guys know. Um, you know, I, I work in districts that have not that exception, um, but they do have it for the exception around final exams for, uh, for students. I, I worked in multiple districts that have done that. They haven't done it for midyear. Unless it's a midyear that's actually a final, in other words, a semester course, elective. Um, so that's another idea that you could clearly bring back to the principal as a potential, um, another move, uh, reforming, uh, what you're thinking.
Okay, so. I was gonna, I was gonna move aside.
Can I just make one quick comment? Um, so I just wanted to clarify, I think, um, I don't think that this is a conversation that we started post-COVID. I mean, I think that sort of our conversation about standardized testing, about high stakes testing, about sort of midterms and final testing, I think is a conversation, I mean, I've been on the school committee for years. And I think as a school committee, we've sort of talked about, um, really kind of thinking proactively about what other options exist. So although we're talking about it in COVID, um, recognizing that the trauma that COVID has caused on a lot of young people in regards to sort of wellness and, um, kind of just everyday kind of life, I think, you know, we're talking about it COVID, but I, I don't think that this was a COVID conversation. So I just want to make sure we make that clear that as a school committee, I, I'm speaking for myself, but I, I think I can remember back that I probably am speaking for all of us that we have absolutely, I mean, I can remember my, one of my first, um, school committee meetings when Ms. O'Neill was talking about MCAS and I was sitting next to Dinesh. So we're going back a few years. Um, so I, I really do want to sort of share that, um, this is not a new conversation and this is not just because of COVID. Um, that really, there, there are better ways potentially. And I know that a lot of people may say that, you know, I don't have a right to say that. But I am, um, an educator and I do have my degree in education and, um, I happen to go to Wheelock College in the olden days, um, where we never took a test, ever. Um, we were trained to be teachers. So we didn't take tests. We had projects and assignments and research and papers. Um, and, you know, I think that students who can take tests, regardless of how much test taking we have them do, they'll be able to take a test. Students who can't take tests, no matter how many times we have them take a test, won't be able to. Um, so for me, it's always been about meeting individual sort of needs of students that really what reflects competency, um, isn't always an A on a test, isn't always even a test. Um, you know, so I do appreciate kind of this thought process and I appreciate everybody working diligently and having conversations and coming together as a community. Um, I sort of said to Dr. Bayetta earlier, um, that I feel like Norton has always prided itself in kind of, um, setting the stage for a lot of things, really sort of leading by example. And I do hope that this can be just another example for other districts to really see that, um, this isn't just because of COVID, that as a district, we really want to look at how are we going to define sort of the skills and the successes of our students. And it probably, for many students, is not um, an academic test. So, um, I do appreciate other options and I really do enjoy the creativity. As a college educator currently, I can tell you, I gave my students a test on Wednesday night. Um, and to Mrs. Bukowski's, um, point, I was able to grade that test literally in a couple of hours. Um, when they do papers or research or, um, assignments that really are sort of more thought based in, in kind of, um, looking at data, it takes me hours to read and to comment. So the work that this will involve for our educators, I do recognize is extreme that, um, you know, sort of looking at fifty questions with circled answers is really a quick process. So I do appreciate people really being willing to change sort of their, um, I guess their work. And I do appreciate, um, Mrs. Bukowski's comment that those half days could potentially be used to read portfolios. I've read many portfolios and, um, so I do think that, and Joe, you know this, we've talked about this and, um, I hope that sort of our comments have gone back to the high school teams, but, um, I really do think that this is where every district should be going. And I do hope that Norton can really sort of lead that. Because I don't think any student should be base, you know, sort of their academic, um, success should be based on a midterm or a final. And I know that that's not what we're doing potentially. But assessments don't have to happen in just sort of that one day when a child sits in front of you. That when a, a class is in front of you, um, I can sort of notice. If I ask a question, who's raising their hand? Who's answering the question? Who's getting their work in on time? Who is struggling? I mean, we sort of know that as instructors, we can kind of get a sense. Um, so I'm not so sure that I fully agree that there even needs to be sort of these assessments that happen, you know, that one time in January and that one time in May. Um, but I do think that moving in the right direction of just sort of thinking, I guess, more, um, alternatively, as what other options are available, will benefit sort of the whole entire sort of learning community. So I just wanted to say that, but.
So, um, Ms. Gallagher, as usually you have these, uh, points that I can't bring this full circle. And I think that the full circle, and I think Ms. Bukowski and any of his staff that's on, um, recognize this, uh, and I know that the, the president of the NTA, um, knows this, she's here tonight. It's not just going to alternative. That's the reason why the model that, that's being proposed is a little bit of, you know, in the eyes of some of us, a little slow. But the fact of the matter is you just nailed some of the points. We can improve students' assessments and, and their, their practice that they're going to be taking for learning. But we need to go through a process of getting there because if you're teaching five sections, uh, of ELA to ninth grade and three tenth grade, or in some cases, actually just have three or four marks. And you have those classes and you're trying to do a portfolio, you're not just with twenty four, twenty five students, you have a hundred students. And if you're doing the portfolio assessment, that's not going to take fifteen minutes to a Scantron. It's going to probably take you five to ten hours, if not more, if you do it right, depending on the rubric. So that's the reason why I supported at the meeting with them, that I am, am happy that we're moving in a direction. The big picture to, to Principal Dolman's point is we're going to have to shift the discussion with the staff also around specific training that some departments are going to probably do quicker than others just because of the art of what they teach. Right? Uh, not because of, of a lack of not wanting to do it. So I would support the recommendation that's been put forward.
Okay, um, we're, we're moving forward because we have a lot to, to learn about still. And quite honestly, we're starting to get into an area we really don't have the authority to go down anyway. So, um, it's, it'll be an ongoing discussion. Uh, I want to thank you guys both for, for your comments. They were, I, I'm extremely impactful. Um, and I'm not saying that because I live with one of you and live next door to the other one. So, um, but, but, but I do appreciate it. I think it's really important for you guys to speak up for yourselves and, and, you know, self advocate. Um, so thank you very much. Again, the question of, of the types of substantive assessments that we're going to take is, is certainly not over. Um, and I welcome you both to continue to be part of the conversation.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just for the purposes of the public, um, Ms. Powers gave me her written statement and the, uh, signed signature. So those will be entered into the record. They'll always be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so what are we looking for here? Because I think there was.
You're also, you're looking for, for, uh, the change in the calendar. Mr. Dolman, I believe it's adding, um, to have, uh, the half days for the purposes of midyear. Typically, the final, it would be the last three days plus the last.
Okay, so it's three, because it does say two at one point.
Yeah, it does say two somewhere else.
And then three on the last.
I believe it's a total of, how many days?
Ethan? The, the twenty eighth is already a half day, um, and the professional development that we would have scheduled that day would be.
And the professional development that we would have scheduled that day would be some of our instructional cycle work, which is looking at assessments. And trying to, again, align and collaborate in order to make some really good adjustments for curriculum. So that's why it's just the twenty-seven, or twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth would be the three half days, twenty-eighth is already a half day. No, and then the same thing at the final is that I believe the calendar, the last day of the school is already a half day, so it would just be those two dates before that one as well.
All right, we'll, we'll make this easy. And I, I would entertain a motion to allow for half days as needed for finals and midterm exams. Second, all those in favor, Kathleen is, I think she's one. Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Shee?
Yes.
Mr. Sabas, yes.
Thank you.
No, I'm here, yes.
Just to give you a, a general enrollment update as it pertains to where we are, based on the latest update, as you know, this changes on a regular basis. We've seen an increase in pre decay, prepaid of five enrollment of forty students. A decrease in six to twelve, which is that bubble going through, that negative bubble of fifty. Overall, out of district is down to thirty-two, but as you know, that, that grows on a regular basis. Our total enrollment is at twenty-four, sixty-five for a total enrollment of five students. Of which thirty-one students is an increase in the school choice at one ninety-four.
Great, thank you very much. Next up, we have the athletic complex, ninety percent design.
Thank you so much. Karen, if you don't mind putting that up. My Switzer has this, you all have a handout of this. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because we put this out there, as you know. This is the ninety percent design of the athletic complex as supported. And the town, the town vote. This is a ninety percent meaning, we are the ninety percent of what we think this is going to look like, as you know, just like the high school project. We now go out to bid and then everything can change, right? Just because we have a set number of money and that's the number we have to partake in from the taxpayers. But I wanted to go to a couple of the slides, just to give you, just if you could move to the next slide. I think you're going to go down a couple. Keep going. Okay, right there. So this is, this is in front of you, you have, on the left bottom, you have Norton High School's totally redone. Field, multipurpose football field, soccer field, lacrosse field. And eight lane track to go with it as well. When you move to the, I guess we call it the northeast side of what's in front of you. That is the, in between there is the traditional grass baseball field that we have. And on the other side of that is behind the Yale School, and that's with a multipurpose baseball, softball. Soccer, lacrosse, football field would be going up. Next to that are the tennis courts. The high school football field, Adams Field, and the now new, what I'm calling the multipurpose field, would be all with lighting at this time. And then the tennis courts do not have lighting, but the idea is to have it set up for potential lighting in the future, which goes back to our original proposal. Next slide. Next slide, again, this is the schematics that we really don't need to get into. Keep going. And so here's just a different outline with the general view. Keep going. Again, here, it's kind of nice to see the end. But this is one proposed, back one please. This is one proposed area. This would be basically the general entrance area. Coming off of the student parking lot area of the high school by the baseball field going into the multipurpose area. So this would be kind of a, the grand kind of area where people could be sitting around and talking before they go in to watch a game, that type of area. So this is an area being proposed. Again, this could change because of finances, as we all know. We can go to the next slide.
So would that take away the parking lot?
No, there's not, no, it's all within, it doesn't, doesn't take the parking lot. The tennis courts, this is a complete, if you will, kind of revision. We've, we've, we've gone the route of eliminating that, that sand baseball field, if you will, some JV field. And we've moved the tennis courts over. It just makes total sense to be able to do it. And so that you know, and I don't think I, for the public, this will be all on our website, that all the next designs that you see is all the. Type of material and all that, I'm not going to get into that as a public presentation. The biggest issue are two issues. One, the sewer connections coming in at a, potentially a higher price than we think. Again, potentially, right? We don't have any numbers, final numbers in front of us from a bid. Two, the bid in, in general, to my disconcerns, we all know what's happening in the real world, right? It is what it is. I don't think, you know, we, we had, we had markup, I want to be clear, in our six point three million dollar proposal. There is markup, if you will, the seven percent included as part of when this was going to go out. As you all know, the numbers that we're hearing in certain materials can be as high as fifteen to eighteen percent. The question is, how, how we split this project? Do we start behind the Yale first with the multipurpose field? Because they can start that right away, right? Or do we start at the football field? That's a big decision that needs to be made, so become a phased project like the high school. Which brings down your costs. That's the goal, right? And then, and then the hard decisions, what needs to come out of the project, which can be left in the project, and so on and so forth. The commitment that we have is, is six point three million dollars. I don't, do not see us going back for a quote, get exclusion situation or any of that. I want to be clear about that. But like your high school project, when I was here for phases three, four, or five, I sat in those building committee meetings. And we had to make difficult decisions, twenty thousand here, forty thousand here, sixty thousand there. Change orders can happen in these types of projects like they, they can in any project.
So when we look at the project as a whole, and, and I understand, I was, having just completed a renovation, I know the cost fluctuate.
Right.
So. Overall, though, our three main purposes aren't going to be changed, just could be.
Currently, no. Currently, we, we are committed to going to the field at the high school as presented to the taxpayers. The multipurpose field as presented in tennis courts. We did shift the tennis court because it was just a better idea to do that. But the goal of the three things is still there. The big question mark, one that's been a curve ball really is the sewer connection. But we have some alternative ways of looking at that. And currently, there is contingency within this project. So it all depends on the numbers when they come out. If you come out at five point four, you know you got a million to work with, right? If you come in at six point three, you're tight. One change order can change the entire project.
And the contingency is still a high number. Yale is very conservative because they are worried about the cost. So there, our contingency is still a very high number right now.
Yeah. So I guess my outstanding question is, what are we looking at for, for shovels in the ground?
So the shovels in the ground, right now, our proposal is, we have one more meeting in December, then I'll go, kind of go. Into writing bid mode. The idea is to get that out probably late January. Close late February, early, excuse me, January, February bid. Close by March, open in April, shovels in the ground, maybe as soon as early April, if we are starting behind the Yale. If we're starting behind the high school, that could be a little bit more of a delay, just because of student parking lots and everything else that's going on with. Construction around a school and so on.
I think our thought process is to get to the bid process as soon as possible.
We want to be the first out there.
Because the Gale, Gale keeps telling us that if, if we're open to starting this project while kids are still in school. It's going to be more cost effective for us, instead of waiting until the school is shut down. So that's something that we're really looking at and, and trying, now that we're at the ninety percent, we're trying to push this thing along to get the bids.
And all of this is going to be put up on our website, probably on Monday, as a separate section, so people can go in and take a look at it. It's got all the colorful pictures on it and all that stuff.
And I just want to be clear again, that we are not coming back to taxpayers for anything over. If we have to cut things out, we might choose to put them in later when we have money to do that. But I just want to be very clear that we are not going to tax payers again.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, before the papers kick off, we have other business.
I will. I just want to thank Bristol County Savings and Terrible Foundation for providing us a one-time scholarship. Of two thousand five hundred dollars for this year's graduating class, which can be distributed according to the scholarship committee at the high school as is wished. So thank you to them for supporting us. And the gentleman who made the recommendation to have it go in this direction, who said that it should be a one student, so thank you.
There is no other business. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December ninth, right back here at the middle school. Is there any other business? Seeing that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, so. Second?
Second.
All those in favor, Kathleen's turn.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Gallagher?
Yeah.
Mr. Shee? Mr. Sabas, yeah, thank you guys. Have a good night.
Thank you all.
That's right, let's go.